Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Town of Milton Planning Board.
I unmute myself.
Again, welcome to the Town of Milton Planning Board meeting for July 2021. Ms. Nealon, would you please call the attendance to the board?
Mr. Marshall.
Here.
Ms. Padula?
Here.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
Ms. Van Dees?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Whittle?
Here.
Chairman Bartow?
Here. I would also note that we have in attendance our engineer Joel Bianchi, council William Kenneri, director of planning and coach Bill Lewis, deputy clerk of management of water. So, thank you. Ms. Padula, you two leave us in a minute. We continue to meet both in person and with remote engagement of the project representatives and the public. We have a couple of opportunities for the public to interface with us this evening. And I'd ask that you are Zooming with us, and want to make a comment, please use the hand wave feature and alert us to your interest in comedy. You may also use the Q and A feature and submit a question. However, we will not accept anonymous questions. Please submit your name with your question. If you've dialed in on the phone feature of Zoom and would like to make a comment, please text Bill Lewis at 518-376-1831 and provide him your name and interest in making a comment. He will alert me to the comment, and we can unmute your phone. As with our usual comment protocol, we request that you announce yourself, state your address, and then... As I was going to say, as with your usual comment protocol, we request that you announce yourself, state your address, and then present your comments in three minutes or less. The only chairman changes I have this evening, I have two changes in the agenda. First, I'd like to note that item five regarding the Ostrosolar site plan and special use permit should be a continuation of review and public hearing. If you recall, we adjourned the public hearing in June to reconvene it again tonight. On item six, it should only be a continued review of Murray Road Solar Farm Phase Two. If you recall, we closed the public hearing in June. So at this point, I will entertain a motion to amend the July 21st agenda to reflect these two changes.
Mr. Chairman, I salute.
I will second.
Second, do we have any discussion? Anybody object? Prove your hands. Okay, our first order of business this evening is a review and approval of the minutes from our June board meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve the June 16th, 2021 meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I salute.
I'll second.
Any discussion or changes to the minutes? There being that non-mutual, could you please pull the board?
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Ms. Padula?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Van Dees?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Chairman Bartow?
Yes. At this point, we will open the meeting to comments from the public. Please note that we have a public hearing this evening as well, so if you have comments on that project, please wait until we open the hearing so your remarks will be on the record. Again, I'd ask if you're Zooming and want to make a comment, use the hand wave feature or submit it via the Q and A button. If you're calling in, please text Bill Lewis at 518-376-1831, provide your name and interest in comment. So at this point at 7:06, I will open the public hearing. Good evening. Amanda, can you double check if that's on?
Yeah, I'll go first. It's on, I turned it on.
Hi, my name is Tom Sherpitz. I'm an attorney, appointment asked me to add here to the seventh item on the agenda tonight, the Ostrosolar Communications Tower. An opportunity, a package of a letter that we put together. We represent SBA Towers, a tower that is approximately two tenths of a mile away from this co-cell tower. Keep your voice on, okay? I've got a package, I said deliver it to the board members now or wait until one's done.
Sure, why don't you have Amanda or Patty take it from you back to him now?
Very briefly, I'd like to make about three points, because most of all the information is in the letter already, and now I can do it myself. The first point I'd like to make is that the town has a tower law. And under the tower law, it encourages and promotes and requires co-location and shared use of cell towers. This application is an antithesis of that, and the bad planning to have two cell towers, two twin towers right next to each other, in such a close proximity in this particular zoning district. As part of our package, we submitted a structural analysis of the SBA tower, and it shows that there's plenty of space on the SBA tower for additional co-locators on our site. The tower law also provides that the maximum height of the tower in the town is 150 feet, which the SBA tower is, and this application is for 170 feet, which is in violation of the tower law. And as such, I think you might be putting a carton for the horse in this instance, because I think that the applicant needs to get an area variance from the zoning board before being considered a per-site plan permit or a special use permit by this board. The last point I'd like to make is another attachment to the letter that we submitted is RF analysis that shows the coverage area of the SBA, of AT&amp;T's coverage area on the existing SBA site with the projected AT&amp;T coverage area on the proposed location. Essentially, what the analysis shows, there is absolutely no difference in coverage of the movie provided at this new tower, which deems it unnecessary to do it on its own. We've asked the board to deny the application, and can't work adjourned table it tonight to allow us for additional time to submit additional comments, because we literally just got the application materials yesterday afternoon, haven't had a real opportunity to go through everything in great detail, and we may have additional comments. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Anyone else have to make a comment, if you have your time? There being no additional comments, I will adjourn the meeting at seven oh nine. Can't start the public hearing for a minute, but I think I've got enough work to get through to go through this for now. But the next item on the agenda, we have the continued review and public hearing of the Ostrosolar Site Plan Review and Special Use Permit. Everyone should have any number of items before them, but the most recent items come in are a letter representing the MS4 Five Acre Winter dated 7/21, a revised site plan dated 7/8/21, and a revised letter, sorry, MS4. And I just want to make a point that the MS400 is not necessary at this point. It's something that would be acted on after and if we approve the town. And that's something that Bill and the engineer would do. At this point, Mr. Bianchi, you have any comments, please?
Chairman, no, actually, we did issue a letter today. We did identify one additional item via email correspondence, which I believe the board may have been on it from Minnesota regarding decommissioning costs.
Yes.
And based on that cost, we would be comfortable using that as a cost per megawatt, that is well above what we have seen as a cost. They would obviously have to update their decommissioning plan, include that number plus the inflation cost over the term of the project, but I think that could be a condition of approval, where the board is going to act on this.
Bill Lewis, do you have any comments for the board at this point?
I go with this guy, Mr. Chairman.
Well, we're at seven oh, seven ten, seven twelve on that clock, so I will continue the public reconvene, public hearing on the Ostrosolar project. If anybody has any comments, they'd like to be on the record. Does the board have any comments at this point? Okay, no additional comments. I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing on the site plan review and special use permit for the proposed Ostrosolar project.
Mr. Chairman, I salute.
Second?
Chairman, I'll second.
Any discussion? Patty, will you pull the board?
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Ms. Padula?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Van Dees?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Chairman Bartow?
Yes. There's still a couple of things that need to be addressed on this project. I don't know if the project applicant is here, somebody representing them, is it Jake? Did you bring that?
I got a hand.
Oh, Jake is not on this project.
Got a hand.
All right, let's see the hand. I don't have the hand, I'm going to need it. Bradley's here. All right, Bradley, let me promote you to his analyst. Bradley, you have to unmute yourself, and you should be able to speak. There you go, you're there. Hold on, I'm going to have to realign this mic.
Right, are you ever here?
People hear that? Yes, go ahead, Brad.
Okay. So, I'm not sure what to address, comes out of Mr. Bianchi's questions, that he said to the way that he served.
Yeah. Let me give you some comments on the decommissioning plan. So there are a few things on the decommissioning plan that I wanted to bring up here, thanks to the people who are hearing through this mic, that we'd like to see the plan particularly addressed. And as Joel mentioned, we wanted to see some regarding the final figures and the escalation cost that you had in there. But, and we can give you a copy of this, I can have to, Henry, our council, if you know it to you. But I'd like to see information, written confirmation that the plan is acceptable to D C, given the nature of it being cited on the liner and everything that's there, because there could be some outcome in long-term restoration of that. Clearly identify the responsible parties. They must include the leasing and property owner, as the applicant will be required to file with the city, or the Saratoga County Clerk's Office. I think the biggest thing we're worried about is making sure we're clear of how changes to the ownership or leasing arrangements may happen. Typically, these projects aren't kept in the ownership by the developer. I'm not sure if you can disclose that, or just have the plan address how and when that would be disclosed. Provide details on the modular recycling program, where they're intended to be collected by the manufacturer, and what's going to be the default in the absence that that doesn't happen. We've got a number of questions from residents about will these things truly be recycled over time? I think a number of people believe they will, but we just want to make it clear in the decommissioning plan that the less C is going to make sure that that happens, not when the owner... Okay, yes, identify and mention the third-party operation and maintenance contractor mentioned within the project narrative as to system description. Any O and M contract must provide for a minimum commercially reasonable aesthetically pleasing site maintenance, mowing, trimming, clear of snow and ice. Attention to details where this could be viewed by the public, particularly where it's going to be continuously maintained at all times, so kind of outline that O and M plan that's going to be on the ground. Plan should be submitted to the town and be provided for it in the land lease. At such the less C will be contractionally obligated to pay and perform all the terms and conditions and requirements of the plan, and the owner shall guarantee payment and performance. We're recommending after five-year intervals, the town designated engineer may, at the direction of the town, direct the applicant and less C to increase the funds on deposit for the benefit of the town to decommission, based on reasonable consideration of the T V E. In addition to provisions stated in the town code, decommissioning plans shall expressly state all conditions triggering decommissioning and state by name the parties responsible for payment and performance related to continuous obligations. In event of material changes in conditions relevant to the decommission obligation, the town reserves the right to directly appoint the owner to update the plan, including but not limiting to increasing or providing assurance or cash payment for full physical performance. The current plan makes reference to restoring the land to its previous agricultural condition. That might just be a typo in there, there's no add going on there, the current condition is a cat landfill. Again, that's where we want to make sure D C's comfortable with that. We think this section should be amplified with details to clarify and address the applicant's representation that it is taking over the management and monitoring of the capital area for as well. You verbally gave us that without the plan, and that would be potentially a subsequent owner or operator. And then the decommissioning reclamation methodology, item 1A, you reference livestock grazing on non-till farming. I'm not sure if you intended to do that, but that too could raise concerns with the maintenance of the landfill. Right now, that goes to currently no livestock or agricultural practice. And then we mentioned in our last meeting that the town's looking for cash as opposed to a lot of short. But we can get you a copy of this, so you can have it.
Yes, I would be grateful.
Kind of summarize some of those, so Bill, you have that?
I do.
So Bill, Kenneri, will make sure you get a copy of this.
I know you summarized those, but on the O and M one, did it specify mechanism by how the town would be notified as used to take care of the O and M as well?
I think we want the decommissioning plan to start outlining that, or include provisions stating that the owner or operator has to do that for that changes.
And Mr. Whittle, the provision that is mentioned in the comment is that all work, including the scope, shall remain and be subject to the authority of the building department.
Okay. I think there's a few things you just got to get us on the decommissioning plan, and if you can get that to us before the next meeting, we'd be in a position to hopefully take final action on this next month.
And just like to confirm, is the negotiation through Jim Craig?
With respect to the decommissioning plan, no, that is through myself, Bill Kenneri, and Joel Bianchi, our engineer. Really Joel, at this point, to make sure it's there. You also have other negotiations I know with Jim Craig regarding the pilot payment and whatnot, that you need to continue those with him. If we get those completed, that's great, otherwise those would be a condition of approval.
Just though I think what, as to this process, do you have an existing contract with the other solar company, Brooklyn, is that something opposed to, you're a free venticulale, or just can look at when you've already referred to it, accepted with similar terms and conditions that you could get through a lot quicker without a lot of negotiations, and it's, you know, what we see as reasonable and agreeable?
Well, there certainly are, to the extent that there have been other projects undertaken and completed in the town. My understanding from Mr. Craig, as of this morning at 8:00 a.m., is that your client has yet to complete the pilot agreement, your client has also yet to complete the community benefit. So those are things that he's looking to complete at the town board level with your client. And then with respect to this board, the answer is yes. This board typically uses rather standard resolutions, both with respect to site plan and the special permit. To my knowledge, I don't know that an O and M contractor has been proposed with respect to other projects, and I see Mr. Bianchi shaking his head. So that's something that's a little bit different on what has been proposed on this decommissioning plan. To my knowledge, there have never been any solar projects on any cat landfills in the Town of Milton to date.
Okay.
So I think you'll see, when Bill gets you this, he'll see the detail in it. I don't know that it's that much to really have, it's just some unique specifications that we're trying to get to with respect to it being a cat landfill. I mean, I suspect, have you been talking to D C already about this?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, we've had a good first conversation over the last year from...
Okay, so we'll just, I mean, we're hoping, we don't need a lot of detail in the letter, just if they're affirming that they've been in contact with you, they have no problems with this project as proposed going on it, and that the maintenance appears to be adequate to ensure viability of the town. That's what we're looking for. Anybody else have any other comments at this point, or Bradley, if you have anything on it, less to say, otherwise, any questions you have, do feel free to get ahold of Bill Kenneri or Joel Bianchi, Joel's the easiest, and we'll do what we can to help expedite this.
Great, I appreciate it.
Okay. All right, thank you. Welcome to continue to observe, or you can sign off, whichever best for you. All right.
I'll turn off, I'll see you later.
Okay, thank you, Bradley. Our next project is the continued review of the Act of Solar Murray Road Solar Farm Phase Two. Mr. McFadden or Ms. Kedell are here for amendment to the site plan and special use permit. The applicant proposes to expand the solar farm that we approved in June of 2019. This evening, we'll continue our review, and the public hearing has been closed on June 16th, so there will be no more public comment on the project. Everybody should have it before them. The only new document is the revised decommissioning cost estimate from Lansing Engineering, 76221. If you recall, at the public hearing last month, a couple of people raised concerns regarding the calculation of the decommissioning cost for the project. Our third-party independent engineer raised these concerns with the applicant, and we all should have received that more detailed revised decommission estimates. Mr. Dell, would you please summarize the cost estimate, which you mentioned, for us?
Good evening, Jason Dell, engineer with Lansing Engineering, here on the head of the applicant. As indicated, at the public hearing last month, there was quite a bit of discussion regarding the decommissioning estimate that was provided. We did provide an updated detailed spreadsheet, which outlined all of the individual costs and how that decommissioning estimate was developed. The revised numbers, we did raise the estimate from $58,000 to $63,724.37, and the detailed breakdown is in that spreadsheet, with respect to the tonnage of steel, the length of copper wire, the salvage values, as well as the practices and the construction techniques needed to remove it all. So that is all detailed in the spreadsheet. Joel issued a letter as well, that kind of went through that spreadsheet and the development of those costs. I believe the gist of that letter was that he does support the cost and the revised decommissioning estimate that we did provide. So that answers the question.
Mr. Tim? That's a good summary. Joel, do you have anything you want to share with us?
Yes, so the board was provided a letter today that was simply focused on the cost. And I do apologize, I was not at the last meeting, didn't realize it was going to be such a topic of discussion, but nonetheless. So what we did is, again, as Jason indicated, they did a costing model. Labor rates, equipment rates, unit quantities of things that need to be taken out and put back, and then production rates. Those all seem to be within reason, given the region of New York where it's going to occur. The quantities, we looked at a sensitivity analysis, or started to do sampling and said, if they estimated a quantity of this, we checked the plans, and they seemed to be accurate within a couple percentage points. So we did that on a couple things, so that quantity number of the number of things they needed to do seemed to be reasonably accurate. The production rate seemed to be accurate, and the equipment costs that they used seemed to be accurate. And then the overall formula to get at each work item seemed to be reasonably representative. And then when you sum them all up, it seemed to represent a reasonable scope of work and a reasonable cost to achieve that scope of work. So that's one item. Not to say that, you know, we didn't want to give that response in the vacuum, we looked at other projects, local to here, and then elsewhere in the state. So in our chart, we reference Ford, Clifton Park, one in the Town of Dryden, the Town of Glen, the Town of Riverhead, the Town of Duaneford, the Town of Goshen. So I've hit the Hudson Valley pretty much in Long Island. So when you look at those facilities, their sizes ranged in both energy production and acreage, and then the decommissioning costs on the first-year basis vary. Sort of normalize that data, we looked at, is there a correlation between energy production and size, acreage? Really isn't. Environmental constraints can dictate that, or what land use boards require. Some boards want the fence further away from the raise, fire departments want access roads around the perimeters. So those tend to make a five-megawatt facility in the Town of Boston, 10 acres, and then if you do it in the Town of Malton, maybe 15 acres. So that sort of skewed that cost per acre, so we did that in cost per megawatt DC. Look at those, they vary from a little over $14,000 per megawatt DC all the way up to $33,000 megawatt DC. So we said, all right, that's an average of probably eight projects. And we said, all right, the variation could be attributed to various factors. Costs to do the work on that project site, every site is unique. Some jurisdictions, we found, take the decommissioning cost first year, and regardless, say you need to tack on 20% or 50%, we don't care, that's in our code, we can do that. So it gives a buffer or continues. Other things that are related to that is the labor cost to do anything in the Town of Milton or Clifton Park are significantly different than doing something of the same magnitude in Riverhead and Long Island. Huge cost factors, both in labor and equipment cost. So those are some of the things that contribute to that wide span of $14,000 to $33,000 per megawatt DC. So that was just to give you a comparative analysis. The costs do span a lot. I compare it to, you want to do house, work on your house, you call 10 contractors, you get a really low price and a really high price, and it's all the same. It's just they do it differently, they have different resources, different equipment, different ways to get the work done. That's sort of a simple analysis of that. So then what we said, all right, let's look at their costs. Again, I talked about going line by line and saying, is this... Again, I talked about going line by line and saying, is this unit quantity right? Is it reasonable? Is the labor cost reasonable? Is the equipment cost reasonable? And is the production cost reasonable? We found those all to be reasonable. We did note that when you broke down their cost on a megawatt, and cost per megawatt was a little low. It was actually lower than any of the projects that we looked at. And I think there's rationale behind that. Remember, this is phase two of phase one. So there's two big components that their decommissioning plan does not need to account for. If you recall, phase one has a fence entirely around it, and it builds access roads. Well, phase two only has to build a portion of its fence because it's enclosed by the rest of phase one. And a majority of the access road into phase two are built, associated, because they're built as part of phase one. So therefore, those decommissioning costs are not borne by phase two, they're borne by phase one. As a sensitivity analysis said, let's assume phase two is somewhat of a stand-alone project, has its own access roads, its own fence. When you include those costs, utilizing their model, it starts to be around $17,000 per megawatt, which gets it above the low. It's still on the low end, but when we look at that context, while it's on the low end, it's within the range, and we are still comfortable by using the number that they've provided to the town as a basis for the decommissioning cost, both in the first year and projected over the lifetime of its property. Try to be, but not.
So in other words, you're saying that the figures seem reflective in the slight adjustment that they did do just to improve your direction? Okay. You guys have anything else you want to say?
I guess I'm uninterested in the board having any questions. Then I'll try and, you know, expect that.
All right. Does the board have any comments or questions at this point?
Yeah, I think Joel did a good job looking for methodology.
We've spent a lot of time over the last few weeks trying to nail this down and focus together.
Trying to give you, we look back, we have metrics for everything when we build. We, sorry. We have metrics for what we build, that we, we have daily reports. We look back into all of our daily reports and reverse a lot of that to come up with. So it's as genuine as we could possibly come up with. And I think when you look at maybe some of the other decommissioning plans around, a lot of the things, two years ago, a lot of this wire was in the ground. And all the wire is now on a rack in these little J-locks. And you literally just lift it out of the racks. So if you look in there, I want to say there was 277,000 feet of number 10 wire. Just literally comes out of the racking system, like you lift it up, and that's supporting wire. So as opposed to it used to be in the ground. So there's a lot of strides have been made in just getting, people are starting to think, how are we going to get these out of the ground? So I think that's probably what we're seeing in addition to Phil's type of phase two measure. So let's, I won't tie up with any more form of solar stuff. Thanks.
So the board, just want to make sure you're all satisfied with your perspective on decommissioning plan financing and whatnot that's on there. I mean, I think that's also reflected in some of the comments we gave, with that solid perspective, as well with respect to, you see those numbers. What I'd like to do is go over some of the potential conditions, should we do a resolution to approve, just so at least clear on it. So the first condition would be that the funds for the decommissioning plan is $63,724.37 we've put into a town, and sure that we're being required by the town. And I know we did a 2% escalation, but if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Lewis, you said current state account that these funds could be put in was last month at 2.8%?
I don't know the actual percentage that had reached out to you. I don't know.
2%, so, okay. So that would be that dollar amount as opposed to $58,000. That as a condition of the certificate of completion, that you complete the negotiation of the pilot, pay minimum taxes with the town attorney, honorable for December, sorry, August 30, 2021. Are you doing that?
Yeah, I think we're at the case from the last one. So as far as I know, Mr. Craig and I are on the same page.
See, condition of approval, the applicant voluntarily agrees to pay the public benefit fund to the town, around $75,000. $37,500, the ten days of approval, $37,500 for the seventh first grant. As a condition of approval, improve the berm buffering on the south side access view of Murray Road, further buffer to the project, and replace the trees on the berm.
Can you just give us some guidance on that, as to what you want? We had, I think Bill got something, we replaced the trees that were missing.
Oh, okay.
I think there's primarily one person who wants this, I'm hoping to get together with them on that. This is not the time to plant, because we're getting rain all the time. So have to do that in the fall when it's time to plant. I just want to make sure we have a clear directive of what we need to do, so we're not doing more than that.
So you wanted to see?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Then our stormwater inspections, the applicant has replaced the trees that were missing, added several more to the berm. I think it's something that we really need to clarify to the applicant, what we're looking for. The public was in, gave their comment on the berm and suggestions, but I think it's something that really needs to be addressed in the original site plan. If, if you want to take the trip out by the board and take a look at it, and give the applicant some recommendations to further shield it. Right now, the berm is, the actual solar array for Murray Road is well shielded until the entrance of the park, as the public had said. And, again, the applicant has added trees in the last week or so to the project. The project has been stabilized as far as stormwater. And he is looking, he's reached out to me for further guidance to what we'd like to see. And just on a conversation that I had with the applicant yesterday, and towards board, I think would be something where maybe we give the applicant some suggestions on what you'd like to see as a barrier or berm that's to be established right now. He's being the criteria of the, of the original site plan.
Correct. Happy to see it's been arranged at an observation tour, we just to say, what we understand, and that's where it is.
So I don't want to, although I know I'm hoping you guys are going to move this to the vote, with some conditions. I guess a suggestion would be, you know, before we get a permit, we satisfy, you know, the Mr. Lewis or the board, you guys give me some sort of guidance on that, and we can work with it forward. You know, I would, again, it's primarily one neighbor, so if we just get together and say, hey, what do you want to see?
That's fine.
I think that's where the noise is kind of from. I think one of the things I just want to point out, and sorry, I don't have a lot of the old stuff there, but this is where the berm is along Murray Road. One of the things that, you know, Mr. Munro was commenting on it last time, Mike said to me outside was, you know, can you put something on what is the southeast side of the entrance road? Unfortunately, that's the ECU latins, so we were able to move the berm up, but we really can't do much more there without going for a ECU berm. And so, you know, I can appreciate that they want something there, but it's quite a berm to get something back. So, but, I mean, we're happy, it's very easy for me to get some trees here, so if I make somebody happy, we're happy to do it.
So let's arrange a visit. I'll put in here that, cut that through, sorry, observation visit.
Okay.
Just wanted, I know we had discussed it last month, and I just want to make sure we're all familiar with the rest of the plan. Hopefully, it'll be stolen.
Mr. Chair, when we do that visit, can we have the old plan, just so we don't, can you bring the old plan, just so we don't?
I'll have a full set of drawings from both phase one and phase two.
Because making you do something more, significantly more than was required on the old plan, would need, if you understood, and I'm not always sure that that's the right thing to do with an applicant. So appreciate your comments.
Totally agree. Totally agree. So yes, we'll set that up, we'll try to set it up soon. We'll look at Bill on that.
Thank you.
And then the other conditions are just maintain continuing compliance with our laws or disposings regulations, and comply with and be accordance to the applicable sections of the town code, and all conditions and modifications required. So those would be the conditions. Does anybody have any questions on the conditions? Quite a lengthy resolution, I'm not going to read the whole thing here, it's very similar to the one we did last one. It goes through the satisfaction that we've made the review in accord with the town code and comprehensive plan with respect to public health, safety, and general welfare, and that the record of review included your operations. There's no sidewalks, building improvements, there's no real development of the panels that are on there. Traffic, there's not going to be any additional traffic, really as a result of this. Safe and accessible parking is built to the extent that needs to be. Landscaping, create existing areas of vegetation, which we do as we remain. The plans she's provided reflect existing conditions and the term of those conditions. Much of this is what former city had.
Correct.
So, well, hopefully it'll be better.
Just like, if you'd like.
And then life safety, you've got this fence surrounding the whole facility, which is required. Sounds and lighting, there is not living anywhere. Character appearance buildings is not applicable, just group 50 transition planes is not applicable. And BMTs, first streams and other type features that you manage, those are extremely important to be addressed. I know that's some challenges, and we're addressing it top of the bill. So other than that, it's the conditions. So with that, we'll do this by a single resolution approving the special use permit and the final site plan. Can I have a motion? Or entertain a motion for the approval of the special use permit and site plan for Active Solar at 833 Murray Road, the solar farm phase two.
Mr. Chair, that's all with the conditions as discussed.
I will second that.
Any further discussion right now? Patty of the poll board?
Mr. Marticano?
Yes.
Mr. Doula?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Van Denis?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Will?
Yes.
Chairman Buckton?
Yes. Okay. So our next step with you is to schedule this. I have one change I want to make to this resolution, I'll come back to mine, and I will drop it off in some.
No rush. Thank you again. You guys have been very close.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have a new application for a special use permit and site plan review for the construction of a telecommunications tower at 66550 Millbrook Road, on property owned by Mr. Lee Ostros. If you recall, last month, I mentioned that Bill Lewis and I had a conceptual meeting with the representatives from Tulsa Engineering, and now we have a full application before us. Several items that should be before you, first being a site plan review application dated 7/21. A special use permit application dated 7/21. Cover later dated 6/28/21. The zoning compliance letter dated 6/29/21, referred to as Exhibit X. Site plan drawings dated 6/20/21, referred to as Exhibit B. The full environmental assessment form part one dated 7/21, Exhibit C. Radio frequency coverage maps updated, Exhibit D. Co-location correspondence from AT&amp;T dated 5/28/21, Exhibit E. The D, Exhibit G, although I did not get a copy of that, I'm not sure. Did you all get a copy of the D?
No.
Okay. So we'll just make sure, I think we have it, we'll make sure we get it around.
Yeah, I have a copy.
Okay. Yeah, if you just make sure you leave on the pad. The radio frequency compliance letter dated 6/29/21, Exhibit G. The redacted lease dated 5/22/21, 6/21/21, Exhibit H. The name and addresses of adjoining property owners within 300 feet dated 6/28/21. And that's all the documents. Regarding the State Environmental Quality Review Act, this is an unlisted action, but I'm recommending that we conduct a coordinated review, since there will be interest in this project from adjoining towns, the county, and possibly others. I had a conversation with Joel about this, and he's ready to do that. So on the first action, I will entertain a motion to declare the Ostros telecommunications tower an unlisted action pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act. I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, that's a rule?
Second.
Chairman, I'll second.
Any discussion? Patty of the poll board?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Doula?
Yes.
And Mr. Collins?
Yes.
And Ms. Van Denis?
Yes.
And Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Pastor Will?
Yes.
And Chairman Buckton?
Yes. And Joel, there's no problem going forward with doing that.
I will, I will answer your question with a question to Mr. Kennedy, is there will be some comments that we will present tonight that may portray a potential incomplete application? Or at least an EAF that needs to be substantially modified? I would find no issue with classifying the action, but unless the applicant updates that critical material, I don't believe updating it would by any means elevate it to a type one action, but it would be, we would need that, I think that is germane to distribute to involvated agencies, to make it appropriate accordingly.
Fair enough. So we'll just leave our secret there and finish that, the next time we meet on this project. So with that, if you'll introduce yourself as the representative of the project, and let's, please.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Heather Brownell. I'm an attorney at Tulsa Technology Management, and I am representing a parallel infrastructure, which is the proposed tower owner. And AT&amp;T is our proposed carrier that will be home leaving on this particular tower. We are proposing a 150-foot modify at 650 Millbrook Road, that is in the R2 district. We are proposing a self-modify, so it blends into the surrounding area as much as possible. The tower will accommodate three carriers, so AT&amp;T plus two additional carriers. And some, as you mentioned, Exhibit C has the photo simulations of what the tower would look like, with a number of 13 points. We believe that our application conforms to the requirements of the tower code, as well as the special permit uses under section 18040 through 49. I do want to address the three points that were raised by SBA's attorney. First, with respect to the height, we are not proposing a 170-foot tower, it's 150 feet, which is in, falls well within the requirements of the code. With respect to coverage, we included a coverage map as Exhibit D, which, from my reading of it, shows that there is a substantial increase in coverage based on the co-location of the parallel infrastructure tower. In respect to co-location, we completely understand that the code has a strong preference for co-location. And we are currently, our AT&amp;T is currently co-located on the SBA tower. They are at the height of 146 feet. And the reason why we are proposing a new tower is because we think that AT&amp;T has submitted an exhibit that supports us as Exhibit E, indicating that the current rental rates that are charged by SBA are not reasonable for market value, and what parallel infrastructure seems to be, is going to be charging is fair market value. So because of that extreme difference, AT&amp;T would prefer to decommission its equipment on the existing SBA tower and relocate it onto the new parallel infrastructure tower. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Lewis, do you have any comments?
I don't, other than I was, the 150-foot was submitted, the E and Y is under LD3, it's a dollar, 150, not 170.
Can you repeat that?
It's, it's under the print marked LD-H.
Thank you.
Mr. Bianchi?
Sure. We, MJ issued our comment letter yesterday, and I will just try to capture some of the more.
We, MJ issued our comment letter yesterday, and I will just try to capture some of the more substantive topics, but the board may, you'll re-quit me on any of my comments. As the chairman indicated, we have preliminary classified as an unlisted action, and a coordinated review is optional. We had several comments on the EAF submitted, and I would advise the applicant, as a matter of ease, use the GIS online app. It captures all the questions that I said we need to correct, and it'll actually make you different responses, and then the rest of it will fill in itself as you had manually. You notice that the submission at least that we received did not have the visual EAF appendices. That is something substantial in the context of the application, and that's required under the Town Council. We did a cursory review of the Part Two for the board's convenience that looks at potential impacts. We said there's potential impacts to land, surface water, plants and animals, and visual impacts. We did note under General Public Law, the application will need to be referred to the central planning and the town greenfield would need to be notified prior to any scheduled public hearings.
Do you want to try to give us a comment?
I should. On the visual simulations, the biggest item we thought was relevant, the board may have concern with, is yes, they did visual simulations, but if you look at location three, Route 29, and the applicant, the application that was first on the agenda, I suspect, or we suspect, once they clear the trees in the front area, possibly, if there was any tree clearing within landfill, the vantage point that they have portrayed may not exist as they have portrayed it, because they may not be aware of it. I think it may be worthwhile to somehow for them to, Ostros, the solar array, I don't think is, has to deal with it, but then maybe it's a convenience to use their consultant to redo the visual simulations. And the board may have other comments or questions on that, or return to that first comment of visual sim. When they do that, it may also reveal that the existing sub-lot is also available, which as of today, I don't believe is from the simulation. Under the special use permit, we identify some of the criteria under the code. Two items I think is of importance that both the applicant, applicant representative has indicated, and also the public speaker, regarding the criteria for co-location. You know, I think the representation by the applicant, I think the planning board needs to consider whether that's valid basis to determine if there is a need for a new tower based on cost, fair market value. I do know, we do know that the AT&amp;T correspondence represents that that's the reason why they're co-locating. That correspondence, in our opinion, is relative, is all planted data, without any numbers to back up their claim. Board may want to see that, to say, here's a fair market cost, and this is what you're being charged, and that may be a valid reason, the board may want to request that. One ministerial item, the notification is provided, appears from 300 feet from the project site, not 300 feet from the project boundary. That may expand the notice for a public hearing, may grab about seven or eight of the parcels.
So just to clarify, Joel's pointing out the property there.
Yeah, you did, the map submitted shows the radius of 300 feet around the tower location.
Okay.
You need to do it around the outward boundaries of the parcel, for example. The last thing on the special use permit, they have indicated no lighting, only if FAA requires. There is some value when coordinating with Saratoga County DPW, who manages the airport, 25 miles away, I suspect the FAA will require that.
Is there?
Is there one on the original existing one? I don't know. If there was on the existing one, that would clearly value. Then we had comments on the site plan, I think at this stage, the site plan comments are very minor. I think it's more substantive than seeker, and in the special use criteria, the board is responsible for. So with that, that's the highlight, if you have any questions.
Does the board have any questions or comments for the applicant? I have pretty much a couple. The only thing I would say, I agree with Joel's comment on Route 29, some of these visuals that might be there. Particularly, we could probably get you the visuals from the solar site, where you can see where they're going to put the line connection, it might reveal some visibility. We can get you those. And then, I guess, I didn't see in the application, and tonight's the first time I found out that you currently are on the tower that's on the Ostros property. So it was not clear that that was a change. All there was, we do business with SBA across the country, and we find it fairly adjusted. So I think it's a little more clarity on that in terms of the numbers, and then what it means. And then, the other thing, the only other thing I have is there is a decommissioning report here, and you'd want to see some layout that shows how you're going to decommission it, and the fact that it's going to be taken down, and surety, and our law references bond, but you see another project typically for cash surety.
Just have one brief comment. I think the board would want you to bring to your client's attention, in particular, within the code section, if you look at Part D subsection three. And I apologize for reading, but I'll read it just so everybody's got it clearly on their minds. In the case of new towers, the applicant shall be required to submit a report demonstrating good faith efforts to secure co-location with existing towers, as well as documenting capacity for future co-location for the proposed tower. Written requests and responses for co-location shall be provided. And we, the board has been thinking about that code section in relation to the AT&amp;T letter submitted.
Okay, so just so I'm clear, if AT&amp;T is already located on the SBA tower, what sort of documentation would you be looking for in terms of us, for AT&amp;T trying to co-locate if there are any?
What do you have? I mean, in the first instance, it's submission of a report demonstrating good faith efforts to secure co-location. You're there, but presumably there's been some determination, a business decision that's been made to leave. So I think in the first instance, an applicant's burden, if you will, is to submit that report. And then the code amplifies it by saying, and what the board is required to obtain from the applicant is copies of the written requests and the responses for co-location shall be provided.
Do you mind?
That's right.
Was that my?
And now currently, to see what is it that's causing the cessation of the co-location that justifies, if you will, in the applicant's presentation, the introduction of a new tower?
I think that's all we have at this point, huh?
Mr. Mandel wants to know.
I'm sorry, who?
Mr. Mandel wants to know if there's an opportunity to ask questions at this time.
I don't see Mr. Mandel, what we're hearing.
He's Rita.
He's what?
Rita.
I mean, we're not really at a time to take public comment or questions at this point. Not that I don't want to receive it from him, but, I mean, he certainly, if he was on earlier, he could have come during the public comment, but there's, we're still a ways away from completing seeker and getting a complete application, and then eventually scheduling a public hearing. So we really have no opportunity. But if he wants to say anything, you can write it to the board anytime, he's welcome. I don't know. Jake, you had your hand up earlier, did you want to say something at all?
Yeah, I'd like to read and arrange a couple others. Anything you can talk, convenient that stuff, anyone who thinks it's, I think I'm bored, you know, I'm very.
That's a microphone difficulty. We'll do, we'll do better trying to do that. Oh, you got, okay, go ahead.
I'm also curious about the numbers, what you consider unreasonable costs. I also know what other tower, new area, you either lease from or you own, and how those costs compare, and why this front tower makes such a difference.
Yeah, I don't have the numbers right now, and certainly, we'll, we'll, we'll learn.
The thing, Chairman, I think the board ought to consider is, it seems like this project, if it moves forward, maybe a battle of RFs or something, so we may have to get an independent individual with our RF experience to analyze both of the experts, and then our experts to say which one.
And that's a good point, I was going to raise that as you concluded, is we had indicated to the chairman that that is not a, we are not subject matter experts in RF. However, there is an RF engineer that we work closely with on another town. He's a PhD, PE out of RIT, he's been doing this for many, many years. And we would recommend him to draw on, if you needed that RF analysis before.
Didn't we use him before on the other ones?
Use him on one.
Yeah, I know, yeah. So I know we have used them before, but I believe for this particular thing, when we're battling the two companies, we ought to, we ought to have somebody to look at.
So should we, should we seek a quote from him?
Yeah, I can do that, because it seems, without looking at what was submitted this evening under the general public comment.
Yes.
Versus what the applicant has said, it appears there's conflicting information, and he would be the arbiter of what is real and what is.
So could you do that, and that would be something you could add to the escrow account on this? And we could do it, a brief one, to just give us a quick 30,000-foot overview of what's been submitted today. But if he had to stay on, we'd probably have to see more.
Yes.
Okay, anybody else have any other comments at this point? Got any questions about what we're looking for?
I feel, and I know we already put on this, but I just want to meet you, I'm coming over here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry. So I know, just in terms of what you're looking for, where the written requests and responses for co-location, if we are able to show that you're currently co-located on the existing SBA tower, are you still looking for a written request, or is it just the fact that you're on, you can put bill around that tower?
No, I think we're looking for the original, original request that was submitted, and then any correspondence that said, okay, this is it, this is, it was reading, it was figures. I'm going to say, this was what we agreed to, I don't know when you actually did that co-location, but I'm assuming it was several years ago.
And just to give you some additional background, I mean, the costs that are associated with the towers, there's a master agreement, and then there's sub-site license agreements for each individual tower. So I can't really say when the actual, like, could probably find out when that master agreement was negotiated, but the costs on that specific site license are part of that master agreement. So it is across the board, it's based on the document, so. But, okay, I think that.
I mean, I think based on what you're saying, it's going to lead to a point that costs have gotten to a point that you think it's cheaper to go and locate on the fact, which is contrary to where our law wants us, without having enough documentation.
That makes sense, thank you.
So that's all we have on that one.
Thank you.
All right, finally, on the seeing things agenda, is a major subdivision proposal from Cottageville Townhomes for a single-family, not a townhome's. I know it gets a little confusing, people saying it's just going to be town.
We have to pick a different name. Applicant name, yeah.
At 240 Greenfield Avenue. Everyone should have before them a major subdivision application dated 7/6/21. Cover letter dated 7/7/21. Full environmental assessment form dated 7/6/21. An act data statement dated 7/1/21. Subdivision sketch dated 7/6/21. The cover letter did reference a D, but again, we didn't get a copy of that D. Brad, do you need to write for a minute? Oh, yes, I apologize. So I just want to note that Nancy Duda has recused herself from this project. She believes her residence location might be of significant interest, so we're actually very, certainly, we're welcome to apologize. But we had the reference to a D, so we didn't, we didn't get it in our package.
All right.
Just make sure that.
Yep, we'll make sure we get that submitted later. Great.
So regarding seeker on this project, it's a major residential subdivision and a type one action, which will require a coordinated review. As noted by our engineer, there will be several involved agencies and approvals associated with the project, but we don't have a complete sketch in front of us at this point. So there'll be a lot more information we're going to need before we can do the coordinated review. But I will entertain a motion tonight that this is a proposed major subdivision as a type one action pursuant to the state.
Mr. Chairman, I assume.
You have a second?
Chairman, I'll second.
Any discussion? Now Patty, call the board.
Mr. Marzicano?
Yes.
Ms. Dula?
Yes, well, it's done.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Van Denis?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Will?
Yes.
Chairman Buckton?
Yes. Okay, like I said, so we have some comments from the engineer, we also have some technical comments from the board. We'll look to complete our seeker communication at the next meeting and start the coordinated review after that. So.
Your name and please. Good evening, everyone, Gavin Deon with Environmental Design Partnership, representing the applicant, who is also with us this evening to help answer any questions in the audience. As presented, this is just our first initial description of the project, a presentation to the town. It involves a 27-lot, single-family residential subdivision located on 18.9 acres. So yeah, with this evening, again, we'll just give a brief general description, and then open up to any questions that you have. So starting with the project location, most of you should be very familiar with the area here. We're located at 240 Greenfield Avenue. The project itself is on the eastern side of Greenfield, so you can see, Greenfield runs on this side of the map. To the north, we have Birch Tree Lane, and then to the south, it's the Woodland Court. So we're located in between those two properties. The existing site itself, as I mentioned, is 18.9 acres. We've got approximately 500 feet of frontage on Greenfield Avenue, which is everyone else's county road. So with this project, we will be required to obtain a permit from the county for the new curricula. Beginning with the site conditions that are there, it's a heavily wooded site. There's only one single-family home that's currently located right along Greenfield. That home would be removed as part of this project in order to facilitate the new road that is being proposed. The zoning is R1, again, most of you are very familiar with the R1. We're looking at half-acre lots with 100 feet of frontage, and that's essentially what we are showing as far as our initial design here. The cul-de-sac would just run all the way through the center of the property. We would be able to provide additional buffering along both sides of the property. Being very cognizant of the existing homes that are currently, both on Birch Tree Lane and also on Woodland Court, we would want to provide, we're guessing at least 50 feet of buffering we would like to provide to give both properties on either side of the project some screening and privacy. The project itself is proposing 27 lots, as you know. Generally, in accordance with the town, you need to have two means of access for anything over the 20 lots. We anticipated originally on going in front of zoning board, we actually made an application for tomorrow night's evening, and we just received notice from the. And we just received notice from the town. I believe that we now are going to be looking at a waiver. So we're making a formal waiver for the 27 lots. And I've got a letter, I guess I can pass out again. This is in response. We can maybe just pass those along there. So everyone's got a copy. And it just basically requests a waiver for the single access on the 27 lots. We feel that it is justified mainly because there is really no other point for us to make a connection to a road. These roads were probably designed a long time ago. There were no provisions for any access into those subdivision roads. At least along the perimeter of our property, there's just no available public land to make a connection. The other thing that we're having difficulty with is obviously the width of the property. It's only 500 feet long, so we really cannot add a second driveway out onto Greenfield. I doubt the county would even allow, especially since we have Birch Tree so close and Woodland also so close to where we're proposing. Keep in mind, there is a provision in the, I believe it's the New York State Fire Code, that does allow up to 30 lots. I don't know where the town stands with that, but just keep in mind that the Fire Code does allow up to 30 lots for projects that just want access. So I have talked about the layout. Again, we'll have the usual street trees along the sides of the road, both sides of the road. And I believe landscaping, we would do a nice entry with a sign at the very entrance. We would also have a mail kiosk. Generally, we have that mail kiosk right at the entrance. So we would like to make the front, have a nice presence along Greenfield. We'll provide additional detailing of all that in the waiver submissions. And then finally, really, the only other thing to, I guess, talk about would be the utility factions. We propose a sanitary sewer connection to an existing pump station, which is approximately here on the property that is adjacent to us. So we can easily access to the existing pump station, which is only maintained by the Saratoga County Sewer District. Water is a little bit away. It's to the south, near Carlton Hollow, I believe. We would be requesting water service from Heritage Line.
How far away is that?
Carlton Hollow? Really no distance.
1,400 feet.
Well, it's over 1,000 feet and 1,400.
There's both sides of the road. Probably six or eight houses on the west side, probably four, four or five houses.
No other subdivision?
No, you have drive, hydrants. You have jumper drive, and you have Woodland Court. You're passing Woodland Court.
Is that recorded? Is that where?
Woodland Court has sewer. I believe that, I believe that. And I have to look at that.
Wouldn't be great, though.
I think they might be wanting something.
Yeah, those are bigger lots.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. One acre lots. That's the way from one acre lots to Woodland Court. So it is well-sized. There's an old subdivision that's probably 20 years old.
So that's about it. Okay. Bill, you got any other comments at this point?
I think the applicant cleared it up on the original review with them. Due to our code states 20 houses on a cul-de-sac. If our code's 30, I sent the applicant to the zoning board. And after review from the engineer and the town attorney, they thought that the waiver would be, or suggested thing from the applicant. And obviously, the applicant suggested a waiver for the use of the cul-de-sac. So we will refund the zoning money to the applicant as soon as possible.
Mr. DeYoung?
MJ issued our letter yesterday, and I won't go over in great detail. As you really detailed, it is type one action, coordinated review. We have listed all the interested involved agencies. Can you hear me?
No, I should use the mic.
I'll use the mic. Okay.
You're pretty good.
Here's that one.
I'll use the mic. We did review part two, just for the board's convenience. That looked at potential impacts. We looked at and said the potential impacts to land, surface water, groundwater, transportation of plants and animals. In our comment on transportation, the board may want to comment on whether you feel it is necessary to do some sort of traffic impact statement. I think at a minimum, they should present what the PRC vehicle trips are, just so that can be a basis for what's going forward. General municipal law will require referral to the county planning. On the subdivision plans, we identified a couple of things. We do again note, as Gavin has articulated, that there are more than 20 lots on a single point of access. The board would have to consider the waiver that they're requesting. I want to remind the board that you've granted that waiver once before. And that was for one more lot over the max we're dealing with. They want, 19 is the cap. Some requested 20. You gave them 20. So that is the basis of this board making the coordination. Board has discussed the fire code as a baseline drawback. That has not happened. So that is out there. There's some discussion in here about whether you're extending the franchise area for the water district. I believe that would be your intent.
Yep.
And whether it's just this project or you're looking to be a little bit larger. But obviously, you have to work with Arden Springs.
Yeah, we would leave that up to that.
Yeah. And then they would obviously have to, that precipitates a whole, most of other approvals. But Tom Bourne has to authorize that franchise area extension. PSC has to do that. So there's some groups they have to run through. The other comment that is of value to the board is the subdivision regulations require the owner shall offer between 5% and 10% of the total land to the town for purposes of parks and public open space, or alternatively, do a payment in lieu of. The proposal appears to propose payment in lieu of with no park lands. It is this board's discretion to how, what is best for the town. So you should probably provide comments on that. I think the balance of the comments are technical. I think that we can work through. I think those are the high-end ones that any interested board can have a dialogue with the applicant.
Comments from the board?
Can you help us understand on your waiver? Is there any difference that the fire code requires when you go up to 30 lots? I'm just not an expert.
Yeah, again, I'm not an expert on the actual fire code itself. However, a lot of times, really, that is regarding, you know, obviously, if there's ever an accident near the one and only entry, we want to make sure once you get a certain amount of lots, 30 lots, in this particular case, there can be a secondary access. One thing that we've done on other projects, we provided like a boulevard entrance. I don't know if that's something the board would like to see on this one, where the highway department wants a boulevard. We've done that on other projects in order to, again, give that secondary access to another lane that may not be blocked. It's really just the concern of having that one and only entrance being one.
I can give you a little bit more depth to that, Bill, if you'd like to. It's codified in the IFC, which the New York State Building Code sort of follows now as of 2020. In general terms, the fire code says anything over 30 homes on a single point of access needs to do one of two things. Has to provide secondary means of access or provide automatic sprinklers. So that's the general gist of it. And then there's different criteria once you get even longer and longer. But that is the reference that Gavin has made and which was brought up on the fire application, understanding that the fire code had, fire code hadn't really changed. New York State had adopted it in its entirety in 2020.
Yeah, anything under 30, anything under 30, the fire code is pretty much silent. But once you go above 30, it says you need to have secondary means of access and/or automatic fire sprinklers.
And I think the important thing to remember is the fire code strictly taking in the ability to access to extension park. It's not looking at other unregulated access. It's not looking at snow removal. It's not looking at ease of highway maintenance.
No, no.
It's strictly, because the fallback is sprinkler system.
Right. And just to go a little bit further, prior to 2020, the New York State Building Code was really silent on public roads. The Department of State would, was reluctant to apply fire code standards to town home roads. And now they've taken stance of the International Fire Code, saying the code is the code that applies to public roads.
Right. So what I'm trying to figure out is where our balance would be and what that protection would be, right? Because what we'd be saying is, yeah, we're going to go all the way to the end of the fire code to 30 or so. Or we'd be saying if we're going from 20, we went 21 or 22. But then when you go into 27 or 30, you know, would we as a town decide something different should be there? I don't know.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah. It would be, it would be the board to reach out to the local fire departments, have them do evaluation. Typically, it's the distance of the response, the road conditions, the width, the length, and how to get apparatus out. It'd be something that you want to definitely confirm with them to see if their apparatus, as the current guy would service the access road at 30, I believe that it would be that the, more than likely, they would want additional fire hydrants or additional fire protection pointed out on the access.
That's right.
It would be, you know, and again, that would come from the experience of the fire chief, knowing his equipment and knowing what he has to service the area. So that would be my recommendation.
Could you do that as well as obviously?
That's correct.
Concern about the radiative.
Yeah, the size of the cul-de-sac.
Right. And Jason and Dave Forbes were providing the letter. So they're aware and we can debate.
They are aware. They have, in the past, had issues with cul-de-sacs, as you all know. So it would be also a good point to have them give you a letter with your recommendations.
If you just explain the boulevard thing. I know what a boulevard is, but how would it, what would happen if the end?
Yeah, so again, it would be very similar entrances that you've seen, where you have just two, one single road as the entrance and another single as the exit. So it would be at this location, you would have a median within the center of the road with a road with single road for entrance and single for.
So what happens to be at the very end?
Then it tapers down. Then it would taper down to a regular, then it would taper down to a regular road width. Wouldn't be a boulevard the whole length. You wouldn't do it the whole length.
How does that do your set?
Yeah, it should be a wider road at that point.
Be a wider road. Wider road, wider, you might be able to squeeze it in the right way, but it's easily accomplishable. I will say that when this concept has been approached with the highway department, they have not been very favorable about it because it creates a.
It's more maintenance.
Yeah. They have to use a different truck to plow 20 feet of road or 40 feet of road.
And I think, I think with being involved with fire department and code, I think you create an issue, cul-de-sac with large fire apparatus, you know, to get into.
And what's the typical spacing for fire hydrants?
It's governed, I want to say it's.
500 feet?
500.
400.
400, 400 or 500 feet usually the most.
Yeah, the fire code is, I think it's silent on it. They say basically hydrant needs to be within 150 feet of all sides of the first floor of every building.
Not a hydrant, sorry.
Flowing device.
Yes. So the 400 or 500 range is what they're looking at for hydrant spacing on a cul-de-sac.
Yeah. That's why they also have, with the driveways that are so long, you got to have a spot in the middle and stuff like this.
Yeah, that's in the residential code.
That's in residential code.
You're right. Yep.
And so we wouldn't have that in this particular case. So what I'm looking at is how it would agree to something like this and have the appropriate protections in there for the folks at the back end. Whether it's the folks at the back end that are sprinkled, that's another option. Is it sprinkled?
If you had fire, if you had fire hydrants that service the area, that would pretty much serve as for the fire code people.
Yeah, we'd have to.
Yeah, that's something that you could work with the fire department.
Yeah, we're more than happy to work with the fire department on doing whatever it takes.
The other thing is, this would be a cycling thing, but is there anything you look besides the long, straight road?
I knew that question was going to come up. Yeah.
Nearly every road we do here in Milton has some, I mean, just look at Birch Tree Lane. There's just a few short 100 feet up from it. I mean, at least that thing.
There's not a lot we can do because of the width, unfortunately, of the site. We'll take another look at it, go to see, make a little bend in there somewhere to make it more attractive. The only other thing that you do begin to lose with that would be the backyards because then we don't have as much buffer in the backyard. We're really trying to preserve as much vegetation at the back of these lots for privacy. So once you start, you know, bending the road a little bit, we're going to lose a little bit of buffer along the outside corner of the site.
And the other, and your stormwater management, maybe next time you can explain why.
Well, yeah, it's a very flat, it's a very flat site. This is just in concept. We anticipate at least having two locations. There might even be three somewhere. And then there may be another stormwater placement.
Just on that, I'm not a fan of stormwater being on the main public.
Yeah, I think we can improve on that.
Think about moving that away from the neighborhood.
Yep, that's not a problem.
It just, we have one of those and it just.
So, yeah, we can definitely either deal with that through landscaping or maybe push it back a little further perhaps.
And then overall, I have reservations on the design. The 27 is a lot. These are tight units and I think they're going to, I understand that they're kind of chromatic in the zoning and scale that you're proposing, but with the character of the neighborhoods that surround it, that's some concern about how that may have this maximum compatibility with the 27. I'm sure we'll get a lot of comment. Tell me what you do about it. And then obviously, our current subdivision standard waivers at 19 or 20. As you rework some of the design elements and try and deal with the highway aesthetics, the stormwater.
Yeah, again, we can address that in our next meeting.
And then the mail kiosk, I just want to reiterate, this is something that postal service has done to us. You'd have to just make sure how it's going to be maintained.
Normally, it's for the homeowners association. They got a couple of spaces. They'll probably do something similar to that. Would homeowners association be okay to do with this in order to take care of the kiosk area where the mail is?
Yeah, is it required to have that or can you?
I think we're going to have to have some form of surety, some organization that's going to do that as well as the green space in the town. But the post office really is the one that determines whether or not.
Yeah, we, the town would love to go back to what it is, the last year.
Yeah, it's really up to the post office. We don't, we don't have to have the kiosk if the post office says we don't need it, we're not going to use it. It's up to them.
We've never got a straight answer from the postal service.
No, there's the, they have the regulations.
Right. And what they can do if you don't do it.
Right. We ran into that in other municipalities. It's the communities. It's a crapshoot. So I guess we'll have to wait and see.
Yes, if you've got something to say.
Just one question, just for the flexibility of coming back to the design, that would be a little more flexible for us to allow our backyards to be bigger. We did a design in, well, we had it designed on by an engineering firm in Rolling Brook Meadows involves a spot that required a 50-foot setback. Real kind of farming days and a lot of the ones now we're doing are 30-foot setbacks from the front yard. If you have the 50-foot right away plus the 30, you're still at 45 feet back. Quite a ways back. It allows the people to have, you know, a rear yard that's better. Plus, that allows us to keep that buffer for each of the developments that are already there. It will keep them more, you know, private. So I was just wondering if you might say.
I mean, on that one, what it would require is 20-plus variances.
20-plus variances, but again, if it gives us what the town is looking. Quite a few variances, but, yeah, if it gives us what the town is looking for as far as aesthetics, though.
I might be able to put a little bend in the road that way.
We can provide a sketch to show what it looks like.
Yeah, the only way we could.
Seems like you want to seize maybe another alternative anyway.
If you had a lot that needed that, we'd require a variance.
Yeah, Brian brings up a good point. We could, we could easily play with the setbacks a little bit.
Right.
And then hopefully, maybe get a little curve in with the road.
Now, I could show the board, you know, the difference, or we could take pictures, because, like I say, it looks beautiful, but the, the ones we did that had the 50 are really 65 to 70 feet back, which is almost too much front yard. Kids can't play in it, you can't, you know. And then also, like I say, it protects the neighbors that are already there, to have them, you know, have just.
It goes away from neighbors.
Yeah, it comes towards the road.
I guess with the buffer, how are you going to deal with ensuring that somebody just says one day, say, I want a big yard and grew up, then it takes a break, excuse me.
Right, I was just going to ask, so by the buffer, I presume you're going to leave up the existing forest?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman? Basically, to, in our comp plan, in the residential, residential, residential lots are usually a budget. It's more foreign, our zoning that you addressed the R1, the residential, it's a partial with the buffers, which will be typically fine. So, basically, the R1 characteristic is less than a lot of residential lot. So, if you don't put, even if you put a deep restriction, as you see with other projects that we have, they basically.
They'll cut the trees down.
They're going to, yeah.
If you do, if there ends up being an HOA, that becomes.
You could do a deep restriction.
The neighbors hate the neighbors for cutting down trees, which can be determined in itself.
Right. The other, the other thing is, I don't think, and for Joel on this, probably the, any R1, don't have any residential, single-family homes that are less than 50-foot, a 50-foot front setback from the road. I think that's.
That's the standard.
Yeah, it's kind of, kind of that standard, so that'd be a little change.
I think the only exception may be Hudson's Road, but that's P D D.
P D D, right, the P D D is the only exception.
Right.
And there's no plus for a zone, right? Not in the R1.
Not in the R1, yeah. If this was someplace else in the town, this might be a perfect candidate for that.
That's okay.
So, do you have enough direction on some design considerations, about things that we're thinking about? And if you wanted to do a workshop meeting in between, it'd be happy, if you guys got more questions, you can, you know, get ahold of Bill and your coordinator. You got the attorney's letter, you got our comments.
Good.
And let us know when you want to come back.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Is there any other business to be brought before the board this evening? There would be no other business before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I'll move.
Second?
I'm second.
And any objections? Monday, we're adjourned at 8:31 PM. Thank you.